Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I would like to call the June 2nd, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to Order. At this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Christina Helms for the invocation.
Those that are so inclined, dear Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you for today. We'd like to thank you for your grace and your mercy, even though we are not worthy. We pray for all of Union County, our residents, our staff. We pray that everything we do gives you honor and praise. We pray that you bless this board in the decisions that we make and that everything is pleasing in your eyes. We do all this in Jesus' holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
If you want to.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. Looks like we have a few people that have signed up tonight. I will recognize the speakers who have signed up. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, and indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of the remarks. A speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or at a separate meeting, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. God bless you. The first speaker we have signed up is Jessica Lee. The next speaker who signed up is Kelly O'Neill. Are there any other speakers here tonight who did not sign up who wish to speak? Hearing none. Oh, okay. Yes. If you want to please come forward, state your name, address, municipality, and we'll give you three minutes.
Can you hear me if I stand this way? Okay, perfect. My name is Amanda Cotter. I am a resident of Union County. My address is 1007 Oak Hill Drive in Monroe. I am here representing Special Olympics Union County, and I just have a few words I'd like to say to you. Can I begin?
Yes, please.
All right. So, good evening, Commissioners, County leaders, and members of our community. My name is Amanda Cotter, and I have the privilege of serving as the local coordinator for Special Olympics Union County. I've stood before many groups in many places, but tonight feels different. Because tonight isn't just a line item in a budget, it's a commitment, one that says to our athletes, "We see you, we support you, and you belong here." What started as a small grassroots effort has now grown into a program, offering three days of spring games and 12 year-round sports, excuse me, serving over 600 athletes. We've launched three annual fundraisers, our polar plunge, golf tournament, and poker run. And we've gone from local events to proudly competing on state, national, and international stages. In fact, we have just returned from the 2025 Special Olympics North Carolina Summer Games, where 51 delegations from across the state competed. Union County was represented by 52 athletes, 20 coaches, sport assistants, and chaperones, and we participated in basketball, gymnastics, and bowling. And we all stayed at Tucker Housing in those wonderful dorms on those wonderful air mattresses. So, that color of purple you see under our eyes has a lot to do with that. We also were proud to have individuals from the Union County Sheriff's Office, Monroe Police Department, Waxaw Police Department, and Stallings Police Department join the law enforcement torch run and participate in the last leg of the torch run at the opening ceremonies, continuing their strong commitment to being the guardians of our flame. In fact, in the past 12 months, addition to what I've shared with you now, we have competed at the Unified Bowling Championship in New Orleans. We had a team represent at the Caribbean Bocce Invitational in the Cayman Islands, which was the first time that the USA has made an appearance at their games. And then, we also had the honor of watching Wingate University accept the Special Olympics North America Unified Champion College of the Year Award. So, the first school to take it away from the University of Florida. These weren't just trips or titles, but they're these life-changing, legacy-building experiences. So, tonight I cannot begin to express what this community grant would mean to us. For the first time in our history, we feel seen by our local government, we feel supported, and we feel hope for what's next. Hope that we will get to stop asking, "How will we keep going?" And hope that we get to start asking, "How many more lives can we impact?" Because our athletes deserve more than just the chance to compete. And Union County deserves to be known as a place that doesn't just include people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, it embraces them. Thank you.
Before we move any further, we actually have a Special Olympic medal winner out in our audience, Ms. Chloe Cole. Look at her. Chloe is a gold medal winner for two events, floor and beam in gymnastics, silver for vault and bar, and for all-around. And her mom and dad are here tonight, Andrew and Elizabeth Cole. And, oh, Chloe's also a golfer.
Turn on him. Look at mom and daddy.
She's got a lot of medals. Congratulations. We're so proud of you. I didn't even ask where she goes to school. Chloe, where do you go to school? Oh, Sardis. That's a wonderful school. Keep up the good work. And Mrs. Cotter, thank you so much for being here tonight. It's wonderful to see you, and thank you so much for the work that you do for our county. It's much appreciated. Okay, let's see. I think I lost track here. Yes, here we are. Okay, I think we've already cleared that. She took that one. Okay, we're going to conclude. Here we go. The next two items on our agenda are public hearings. Before opening the first public hearing, I will read the rules that apply for any members of the public wishing to speak on either of these public hearings. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, and indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers shall limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing only. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. The first public hearing is Item 25-321, a public hearing regarding the system development fee study. I will open the public hearing and recognize Amy McCaskill, Union County's Water Business Operations Director, for comments.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Ms. Chloe is a hard act to follow, so congratulations. Okay, so tonight we are here for the System Development Fee Public Hearing. This is after the 45-day public comment period. We are required by general statute to have a public hearing. So, this is to report back to you on the public comments we received during the 45-day public comment period. And next steps would be to approve the resolution in the business item today and to have updated fees in the county manager's budget. The timeline, if you recall, on April 7th, the board gave us direction to move forward with posting the final study using the incremental cost basis for both water and sewer. Stantec presented a program to you all that night. We posted the document on the website, April 14th through May 30th, for the 45-day required public comment period. Tonight, we're giving you the presentation on the public comments received and having the public hearing as required by statute. As a reminder, the results of the SDF study showed that based upon our expansion-related capital in our current CIP, incremental method is recommended for both water and sewer. These incremental fees, you see 46.69 for water and 10,800 for sewer are for the 3/4-inch meter. You have a schedule of fees attached that would show you all the meter sizes and the fees associated with each of those. The incremental method is based on percentage of growth by major transmission and collection projects, as well as the Catawba Water Plant. We received one comment during this 45-day period from a one resident of Union County, and their comment was, "Stop building and invest in parks, roads, and infrastructure." Next steps, the June 2nd, in the business portion of this meeting, you will be asked to approve the analysis and methodology included as a business item. And then, at the 16th board meeting, the fees would be included in the manager's budget. And that is all that I have for you.
We do not have anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing, but is anyone here that would like to speak on this topic?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name is Joel Down. I reside in Wesley Chapel, as you probably all know. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed fees here. We all know that these fees will ultimately go help infrastructure in the water and sewer plants that this is going towards. As the constituents stated on there, that's what they want to see. Obviously, we want to see more than just this, but unfortunately, the state legislature has not changed the legislation so that this board can do more. Obviously, we all know what we're talking about. But I would thank you for at least charging the most that you can for this, because the growth needs to continue to slow. And we definitely need, as I've been here, I understood that we need more commercial in this county, and hopefully this will help with that. But I think that the General Assembly needs to do more. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. The next public hearing on our agenda is FY 2026, the Proposed Operating and Capital Budget. I will open the public hearing and recognize our county manager, Brian Matthews, for comments.
So, this is our public hearing on our proposed operating and capital budget for 2026. I will say that this has been a little bit of a challenge. We had a revaluation this year, and obviously, there were a lot of public concerns about the revaluation and what that would do and what effect that would have on property taxes. A revaluation is not a bad thing. It's a reset of what the values are. We don't control what the market here is in the county, so we're required by general statute to certainly make adjustments for those market changes. Those have been done. Now, it is our goal to then set aside a budget for county operations while keeping the tax rate as reasonable as possible. And I think you will see that we've done a good job of trying to be reasonable with that tax rate. The staff has done an excellent job in working on this. Just to go over a few things, what is being recommended in my budget, and keep in mind, this is the manager's recommended budget. After this, then the board will deliberate and make a decision, usually on the meeting on the 16th, is where the board will have a decision on what you do with ultimately the budget, but this is my recommended budget. Previous or current tax rate is bifurcated. The board had made a decision that you wanted to show education expenses or a tax rate specific to education, and then a tax rate specific to general government. So, what you have here is the recommended rates for that. The current rate for the county's general fund is 16.32 cents on the 100. We are recommending that rate be changed to 11.24. The debt fund, which is all county's debt, our general fund debt, would go from 1.75 cents to 1.06 cents. The educating operating fund, and keep in mind, this operating fund covers all forms of education. This is South Piedmont Community College. This is Union County Public Schools, as well as the component that is part of public schools, and that's paying for charter schools. That's a built-in cost that they have to accommodate. That fund would go from 37.42 cents to 26.78 cents. The education debt fund, however, is recommended go up, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit. That's from 2.92 to 3.89. That is really more related to voter-approved debt, but I'll talk about that in just a few minutes. And then, the economic development fund would change from .39 to 0.45. I want to point out that we're required to calculate a revenue-neutral tax rate. Now, revenue-neutral by general statutes means that we can capture what is called organic growth, or growth in the system that we would normally receive anyway. That's new structures being built. Those are the... Those are the values we receive because over time, our county grows. That's generally somewhere in the 4%, 4.5% range. So, the revenue-neutral tax rate calculated using those general statute parameters would be 41.60 cents. We are proposing a total tax rate of 43.42 cents per $100 of valuation. That is an additional 1.82 cents over revenue-neutral, and that is specifically and only for voter-approved debt for Union County Public Schools and South Piedmont Community College. We are not recommending any tax rate change for general government. That is specific to the education debt. So I want to point that out. You do see that economic development fund did go up a little bit. The reason why is we actually shifted some of the Union County Debt Fund to that Economic Development Debt Fund, and the reason for that is, number one, this board made a decision to create your own economic development department. Number two, you've made a commitment to going out and trying to secure property for economic development purposes. We need funding for that. So, that shift from the Union County Debt Fund to the Economic Development Debt Fund will help cover, number one, paying for that department, number two, having funds to be able to actually purchase land so that we can do more economic development in Union County. Just to go over some totals, you'll see that the total budget for general funds showing it a little over 216 million, almost 217 million. The Union County Debt Fund went up to 9.2 million. Education's operating fund, again, those are all education partners. That's not just one. That's 164 million, as far as operating funds. Education debt, again, that's debt for all of our education partners, is at 51 million. Then, our economic development fund went to 2.7 million. And then, you have your enterprise funds, which is water and sewer and your solid waste, and those did increase as well, 93 million to your water and sewer, and 15 million for your solid waste fund. So there were some increases as far as those budgets go. Most of those for general government were related to either capital or our expenses for our class and compensation, understanding that the board made a decision in order for us to attract and retain quality staff, we've got to be able to have compensation and benefits for those. So a good bit of those increases of capital needs, as well as those class and compensation benefits for our staff. The other items within there are combination, depending on the education. Again, that debt, that fund went up because debt went up as far as what the voters approved. That's why you see an increase in that. Water and sewer, again, went up because we are, the board voted for a number of projects in their capital line item, and that's one of the reasons why you see that going up significantly as far as those projects that we have to deal with. This is where I wanted to talk about the voter-approved debt just a little bit. So, what you'll see here is that previously, when we were talking about this back in 2022, we had estimated at that time that the actual increase for voter-approved debt would be a little over 3.5 cents. So, our current debt, .85 voter-approved, plus what was approved for UCS, you have a total education debt of almost a little over 4 cents on that. After the revaluation, we were able to realize some savings on that. So, the values of property helped for us to actually lower that impact on the tax rate, and that ultimately dropped it down to 1.82 cents. So, we were able to work through the revaluation and lower that tax rate impact significantly. Now, again, that is due to the fact that people's values are higher than what they were in the past. That's a market adjustment. That's not something we control, but because of it, we were able to yield a better rate impact, and that's significant. If you look at it from 3.5 down to almost 1.82, that is a significant decrease in our impact on the tax rate. Just to give people sort of an example of what this would do as far as the average property values within the county, we showed the one that's in bold there. That is sort of the median value within the county, $450,000. There are plenty of homes that are well above that, and there are some that are below that. But if you lived in a home that was valued at $450,000, that additional 1.82 cents would yield almost $82 in additional tax for that year. Just to put it into perspective, that's $1.58 per week on a $450,000 home. Now, granted, you have a much more, you have a higher-valued home, it's $182 impact if you've got a $1 million home. If you've got a $200,000 home, it's $36, a little over $36. So while the impact certainly is, you know, more money out of people's pockets, the actual total is not necessarily significant when you look at over a full year, 12 months worth of period. Just to give you a little details on what we have as far as the budget goes, as I mentioned before, we are investing in economic development. I talked about that rate. That rate generates about $2.75 million in actual funds, as I said. This is for debt service on current economic development funds. This is for land banking, and it's also for the operations of the brand-new economic development department. We think that this is the start of being able to see more economic development countywide as opposed to being focused in one area. Enhancing public health and safety, some of the things that we're trying to accomplish here under this budget is providing for enhanced basic life support, BLS, and an ALS-tiered response. So we're giving some additional funds to our EMS partners for new EMTs, and also some capital funds to help them with purchase with transport vehicles. Again, a little over $745,000, almost $750,000 for 12 new EMTs, and about $2.3 million in capital for those vehicles. We are also recommending a change to our senior nutrition program. There's some additional funding necessary in order to continue to fund senior nutrition at its current level. That's, the cost of food has gone up, and that's a little over $127,000 to do that. But also, we're recommending almost $250,000 to help reduce the waitlist. It doesn't do away with the waitlist. It helps reduce that. But the good news is, is we've had our municipal partners are, they are stepping up. Several of them has expressed interest, Wesley Chapel, Mineral Springs, Wingate Lake Park, and Waxaw. I believe Wesley Chapel's the only one that's formally committed funds at this point. The others are interested. We're working through that process. They're just not formally done at this time. Yes, ma'am?
Next meeting, we need to approve this. Can staff reach out to them in the next week or so to verify their commitment or not?
We will certainly do that, absolutely. What that would do, obviously, would make up some of the difference on the waitlist. So while we are recommending some additional funds to help that waitlist, it would just, it would just add to that, but we will do our best to get a commitment.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And we're hopeful that other municipalities, other than the one shown here, will join in as well.
Well, reach out to all of them, if you will, especially those that have high clientele on that list.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Fire services, if you recall, the county went to a fire tax for all of our volunteer, all of our fire departments within the county, and there are a significant number of them. So each fire department has its own specific tax rate, and that's really based on it's the value of properties within their district and the budget related to those fire departments. So obviously, when the value goes up because of revaluation, the amount necessary to make it, make them whole goes down. I'm not going to tell you that the actual rates for the fire department would be lower than what they were. They're lower than what they were, but they are going to generate the revenue necessary to run the departments. So I believe there was one department that actually did go up, and that had to do with the valuation of the property.
It was New Salem. Three substations, thank you.
It did go, it did go up, but, but again, that is also related to the need for their actual area. They grew, they had some substations. There were things that grew in that cost. But I will say that the fire departments have done an excellent job in the county, and I think that that tax rate system that we put in place has been very beneficial and well-received. One of the things that they face, which this has been a volunteer county for a long time, is actually staffing. It is difficult now to find volunteers. There's a lot more that they have to do. There's a lot more training and time commitments, and it's getting to be where we're having to fund more paid fire personnel versus the volunteer ones, and so that's a challenge. Also, the cost of their equipment has gone through the roof. I mean, half a million dollars for a vehicle sounds like a lot. It's gone up to near a million dollars now for those same fire trucks. So again, we're, we are faced with those increasing costs. Water and sewer, as I pointed out, that enterprise function is going up. Part of that, again, is due to the capital budget that the board approved. There are a number of projects that are built out into that. We're expanding our water system for the Catawba Plant. We are doing, doing some projects to actually increase our fire flow, as well as pressure, water tanks, water lines, and we're also doing some work on some of our sewer. We're not growing capacity of our sewer in these rates. The sewer that is being grown is actually being paid for by grant funds that we have received through the state and some additional dollars we already had set aside. So those dollars are not for growth of the sewer system. I want to point that out. But you are going to see a 7.25% increase for water rates and a 6% increase for sewer rates. The board previously voted on a three-year rate increase program. This is the second year of that three-year rate program, so just keep in consistent with that. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian, thank you for explaining that, and I think that, you know, we probably need to clarify this a little bit further in the fact that the increases that we approved for water, number one, show commitment to safety because, as I understand the information that we had, there was questionable water pressure there, you know, for emergency services use. And so, you know, that required us to make some investment there on the water side. Obviously, the Catawba Plant is a, you know, huge thing for Union County, and with the unprecedented growth that we've seen, well, we're going to have to make some investment there, too.
Yes, sir. And we have partners there as well, so obviously, we have, we have tried to grow with our partners. They have been, they've been willing to always grow when we needed to grow, so same thing, we need to be willing to partner and grow with them as they do as well.
Yeah, and the only last comment I'll make is, is that I think that this shows this board's commitment to water especially. You know, we do recognize this is important, and we certainly, you know, want to be able to provide for the county with this, but we also want to provide safety, too, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks, sir.
You also saw the system development fees, as we had a public hearing on the system development fee methodology. Later, you'll be asked to make a decision on that methodology, and then on the 16th, as part of the budget, adopt whatever those fees might be, and so that's later on this evening. Investing in our employees, I mentioned this earlier. So, we did a class and compensation study for employees. We are on the third and final phase of that compensation adjustment in order to catch up. We were, we were way behind when it came to our peer organizations and how our employees are compensated, so we are making up for that. This also includes in this budget a 2.5% cost-of-living adjustment, which would happen in January, and it is my goal in the future to have a cost-of-living adjustment in mid-year, basically January, and then the actual performance evaluation adjustments would be done in July. So employees that received, you know, great marks for their performance could get an adjustment in July, and then their cost-of-living adjustment would be in January, and that's really the run concurrent with the Consumer Price Index and how that information comes about. That's usually more of an annual number, so that's where we get that 2.5%. We look at the CPI and how that, how that looks for the, for the year. We're also have made some adjustments to our healthcare fund, which has helped provide some savings for us so that we could realize some of these adjustments for classification and compensation. So we work very hard to try and get our employees the best that we can to make sure that we are competitive. Union County Public Schools, we were, unfortunately, we were not able to accommodate their entire request. It's just, within the budget as it is, without additional tax rate implications, we were unable to fund their entire operational cost. However, we were able to provide them an additional $8.8 million, and this is slightly above the organic growth, and fortunately, that gives them some funds that they can work with. It allows them to accommodate some of their mandatory items that they have in their budget, as well as some discretionary items. We were also able to fully fund their capital requests, and that was through a number of different avenues. One, the money that we always have set aside for them in our, in our budget for capital, and two, we're able to realize some one-time funds. Some of our monies for state building are in our funds, sales tax reimbursement, as well as some fund balance, not, fund balance in our education budgetary fund, not their fund balance, our education budgetary fund balance. So we're able to cobble those together, meet their full capital request, and then next year, of course, we'll, we'll adjust accordingly based on what their request is for next year. Unfortunately, as I said before, you do have a $14.5 million estimate for the charter school funding. That is not something that the county nor UCS has any control over. There's a calculation at the state level. Those funds go with the student, and if they leave and go to a charter school, then we have to pay that money to the school, and the school turns around and pays that to the charter school. So that's a lot of money coming out of the UCS's budget that we have to accommodate for them. South Piedmont Community College, we were able to help them as well. They had some security issues that they wanted addressed on their campus, so we've been able to operate, give them some additional operating funds to deal with those safety threat assessments, proactive security, as well as enhanced security measures, and then we met some of their operational capital budget needs of a little over $375,000. Again, another one, our education partners, that we're doing our best to try and accommodate. So just next steps, we have the, hopefully, the budget adoption on the 16th. And I say hopefully because we need it by at least June 30th, and that's your next meeting, so we really don't want to go past that. That's not a good thing. We want the, want the board to hopefully give us a decision on the 16th, and then budget implementation would start July 1. There are some people I do want to say thank you to and all the work that they did in the manager's recommended budget, but there are so many folks that do all the hard work on this, and then they turn it over to me, and I stand up here and give you all the good news. That's our county's tax assessor office, our clerk, you know, all of our different, our budget and finance staff, our information technology folks, our budget director, our executive team for the manager's office, and then, you know, the folks who are really staying and burning the midnight candle oil there, our budgets and grants team, because they do put a lot of hours in trying to get this done. You know, Jason May, our new director, Blake, our assistant director, Mary, Greg, and Jody, thank you so much for all they do, because they really are the backbone. They're the ones doing all the work, and I appreciate that because I don't want to sit there at night and type all this stuff in and do all the calculations. They do all of that, and then they give it to me. They do all of that, and then they give it to me. So I really want to say thank you to them. That is, that concludes the presentation I have. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. Other than that, then you have a public hearing, and we can go from there.
Mine is more of a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe something for our next discussion. I was extremely happy to see money budgeted for senior nutrition and to take seniors in our community who have been sitting on a waitlist for, for that. But I do want to challenge you and staff because I did not see anything for in-home services.
Okay.
For seniors. So that is a discussion I would like to have and to see if there's anything we can do for the seniors that are on a waitlist for that as well, if there's any room for us to circle back and look at in-home services.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments?
Ms. Haines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment, Brian, and, you know, you and I talked about a number of different things, you know, in the budget this afternoon, actually.
Yes, sir.
So first of all, let me say thank you to both you and all the staff that worked on putting this proposal together. The, the fact that we have balanced so many different things with this budget, and well, you know, things being equal, without the voter-approved bond, would be at 41.6%, which is revenue neutral.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, first of all, let me say that the only potential increase that we are looking at above revenue neutral, and it actually come in, to your point, a little bit better than what we at first anticipated, was a voter-approved, actually, two voter-approved bonds.
Yes.
In November.
Yes.
So that would include the upgrades there, well, I should say that'll finish out the Forest Hills Cluster.
Mm-hmm.
As well as perform design work for Parkwood High School. And then also proves an investment there with SBCC.
That is correct, yes, sir.
So, you know, education has been very important in our county, and it was apparent in what the voters approved in November that they still supported these projects. So I believe that it's incumbent upon this board, obviously, to have to fund those projects if the voter, if the voters do approve them. So, so again, just an observation, I appreciate you pointing that out. I think that, well, one thing that I like seeing in your budget was an increase in funds there for economic development purposes.
Yes, sir.
You know, because we've talked about this time and time again, that, well, you know, we've experienced a lot of residential growth, and we're currently sitting at 90% residential and about 10% everything else. And so economic development in this county is a huge priority for us. You know, we want to diversify that tax base. So it's not a burden on our residential, you know, units and our dwelling units and our, our residents. So, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate your office making that a priority.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if we want to go back to this slide or not, or if you'll know what I'm talking about, but when we were talking about voter-approved bonds, and there was a column for 2022?
Yes, ma'am. Let's see if I can find that. There.
So weren't there also bonds for 2024 that were voter-approved?
Um.
Or not?
Yes, there were.
Okay. So do we need to have a column to, or are we okay with what was approved on 2024? Or we, or do we only need adjustments for 2022?
Yeah, as far as the rate goes, the, the rate that is shown accommodates all of the, what's, what's been approved at this point, so.
Okay. Because it is a little confusing that it says 2022, so if you go back and look at your ballot for 2022, you would, it would, it does not appear to acknowledge what the voters approved on the 2024 ballot.
Sure. So Beverly said the South Piedmont one was approved in 2022. Oh, sorry.
The schools was 2024, South Piedmont's 2022.
Okay.
And so, yeah, it is a little, it, it's confusing because it doesn't, it, it doesn't show you that really the UCS one is really the 2024 number.
Okay.
And the 2022 number is the South Piedmont number.
So we can just add that.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, to each one.
But there is no additional impact. 1.82 is for all of that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I'm glad I brought that back up.
Yes, ma'am.
So that, you know, because probably the 2024 ballot is what people remember the most.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
You know, what they just voted for.
Correct.
So that might be helpful to show that SBCC was on the 2022, and UCS was what we just voted, well, it's 2022 plus 2024, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. It's all, it's all the debt necessary for school funding. And I, I do want to point out, and I didn't say this, that the county used $10 million of our own ARPA funds to put in that school debt fund. So we bought down the debt by putting some of our own funds in there. And so that number would be a lot higher if we didn't do that, take that, that strategy.
Well, and I think it's important for everyone to understand, too, that, you know, when this went on the ballot, this is what it was estimated to cost.
Yes, ma'am.
And because of those decisions, like buying down and using $10 million to buy that down ahead of time, has helped get us to not having to talk about, you know, the, the 4.35. As opposed to the 1.82.
Absolutely. All of those things together have made it, you know, instead of the perfect storm, sort of the, the perfect sunshine, or whatever you want to call it. It wasn't a storm, it was a good thing, and be able to make that impact less.
And coming out of COVID.
Yes.
It's great that Union County is as healthy as it is to be able to, you know, offset what it would have, what it would have caused.
Yes, ma'am. Again, I know folks, I know there was a lot of fear, a lot of concern with that revaluation, and I get it, I understand. But had we not gone through that revaluation, that number would have been closer to 4.35.
And while you brought up that word, revaluation, I just want to remind everyone here and at home listening that that was a state mandate.
That is correct.
You know, we did not choose to have a revale. That is a state mandate that we are required to do.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would just say, you know, please, you know, edit this particular graph so that everyone understands that we're, that they're not waiting for the 2024 shoe to drop to find out how much that's going to cost us.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Brian, one, one more comment, since Commissioner Burrell brought up the assessment. I think, I mean, listen, we've had numerous conversations with folks regarding the assessment. And, and to her point, you know, this is something that the state mandates that we do, obviously, that's triggered also with, you know, sales numbers. But, you know, we, we talk about the concept of revenue neutral, and, you know, what that means is, is that where you, where you see an increase in, in home values, those assessments, it is incumbent upon us to lower that rate.
Yes.
So we're not looking at, at the previous rate of 58.8 cents.
Yeah.
We're looking at a much lower rate than that in an attempt to keep everyone's taxes as close to what they were currently paying as what we can.
Yes, sir.
And still become, or still be responsible, you know, for all the different functions and services the government has to provide.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We have no speakers signed up for this portion of the public hearing. Are there any speakers here tonight who did not sign up but do wish to speak?
Madam Chair, I signed up, I tried.
That's okay.
I signed something. My name is up there somewhere.
Regardless, we, we are more than happy to hear from you, Reverend Benchin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and fellow commissioners and staff. I am Reverend Jimmy H. Benchin, Sr. I reside at 302 Tucker Street, Monroe, North Carolina, 28110, in the municipality of the great city of Monroe. I stand tonight before this awesome Board of County Commissioners of ours, just to, from the Union County Public School perspective, share some highlights that we hope will get considered in this budgetary process. Said highlights start with this. Operating budget requests, and we just heard the manager, we're just, we're just petitioning, we're just sharing. Increase of $14,676 and $982 over to 2024, '25. We're looking at $2 million requested to sustain current operations, $11.1 million requested for compensation increases. We're looking and hoping for a flat $2,000 increase for certified staff supplements. This increased projection to move us in our state rankings from 37th in the state to 10th in the state. If funded, this would be the first time in almost 10 years we have been able to increase the instructional supplements two years in a row, if that is funded. We're looking for a 3% for skilled trades and facilities and transportation, 1.5% for teachers' assistance, and $563,900 requested for support staffing, such as two additional nurses, five-year plan to increase the numbers to provide a full-time nurse in every school. And we know with the situation that happened a few weeks ago in Fairview, how important it is to have a nurse in every school. Additional month of employment for EC support, such as data managers and bookkeepers. $850,000 to support the charter school payments projected to fund 5,200 students. In our capital request, we're looking for an increase of $850,224 over 2024, '25. $15.4 million to support repair and maintain existing buildings. $560,000 transportation requests for three activity buses and local service vehicles with the highest maintenance of cost. And as a former coach, I can tell you the value of those activity buses. We're looking for $250,000 replacement equipment for school nutrition. Many of our schools were built during the same time period, so that causes a lot of the equipment to go down, unfortunately, at the same time. $4.4 million to support the district's annual laptop lease, and $50,000 for Piedmont High School band uniforms and equipment, which is in par with our year eight of the district 10-year funding cycle, in which every year a school's band uniforms and equipment is replaced. We respect, and we are so happy to have you all serving as our Board of County Commissioners. And again, on behalf of the Union County Public Schools and the Board of Education, we hope that you will be able to find in your deliberations these requests that we have made before you today. Thank you, and blessings to all.
Thank you very much. Would you like to leave a copy of that with our clerk? And I do have a couple of comments, and thank you so much for being here tonight. When we had our joint meeting a couple of months ago, I think even at that early time, time period, two or three months ago, when we, when our board met with your board, I believe the county manager was very transparent in that meeting that we would only have, like, $8 million to add to your budget. Did, did that not give you all enough time to look and see, you know, what, what you would or would not be able to do, and whether you would be able to give $1,000 increase to the classroom teachers versus the $2,000? And I don't know if the county manager or if you can help me with this number, but what, what was the number to do a $1,000 stipend increase for the teachers?
My recollection was for the $2,000, it was a little over, almost $8 million, but I think $7-point-something million, that's my recollection. That would, for $1,000, would make it somewhere in the 3.5, 3.7, I believe, range, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, and so I, I just want to confirm that my memory was right, and that's what I recalled also. So, you know, having communicated that the county would only be able to increase the budget by $8 million, with that information a few months ago in the joint meeting, that right there would have, you would either be able to do the $2,000 increase and nothing else on your request. So that's why I really want to see the copy of all the things you read off tonight.
Yeah, and at our board meeting, we, we vote, we, we voted for that flat $2,000 rate, again, realizing and knowing that we're presenting to you all. And we're, it is our hope and our endeavor, but obviously, we stand ready to receive the rulings of the Board of Commissioners.
So I guess when you, when you and your board reconvene, you would have to decide to strike out everything else on the budget request and do the $2,000 stipend, or go back to the $1,000 stipend to do some of the other things on your list. Commissioner Haines?
Mr. Benchin, the $2,000, who did that go to? Did it go to classroom teachers only, or did it go to supporting staff and to?
Classroom teachers.
Board of Education members?
No. Ms. McLam is here, she can help with that.
Thank you, Ms. McLam.
No, that would be certified staff in our school buildings. That, that flat increase has always been for our instructional staff in school buildings, which does include teachers, and, you know, all of our guidance, you know, all, all of those instructional school building, school-based staff.
The people that have hands-on with children?
Yes.
Only?
Yes.
So that gets a little tricky. So would there be people with central office that are getting that stipend because they're a certified teacher?
No, this is really intended, if they, we, we serve a lot of students, and we have a lot of instructional staff in our buildings, and this is intended just for them.
Okay, thank you. That's a common question that gets asked, so it's good to have that out there. Do you have any questions?
Is that it, Madam Chair?
That's it.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you. So I, I did want to point out that there were some mandatory items that were in the school's budget requests that I, I think would have eaten up a good bit of that $8.8 million, and some of that has to do with the increases that the state level would do. Those, again, even though the state agrees to give funding, we still have to accommodate some of that. So there were some mandatory impacts that would eat into that $8.8 million. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it wasn't that they had $8.8 million that they could put strictly towards teachers' supplements. They, they didn't have that flexibility. I did want to point that out.
Sure. Any other questions? I will now close the public hearing. Next on the agenda is item 25-277, recognizing 2025, the Bobby Cobb Award recipient. I would like to recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nolling concerning this award.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor tonight to be able to recognize one of our employees for the 2025 Bobby Cobb Award. Bobby Cobb was an incredible employee, but he was an incredible human being as well. He unfortunately passed away in 2022, but while he was with the county, there was no department that wasn't touched by what he did. And as a way of honoring him, every year, we, we came up with this Bobby Cobb Award. So this year's 2025 recipient is Jared Steele. Jared is a park superintendent with Parks and Rec, and he's been with the county for 20 years through a variety of, of services. Jared Jared handles himself with grace and humility every day. He works with countless county departments, he also works with countless outside agencies. So we have a short video we're going to show, and then we're going to invite Jared up to congratulate him.
Mr. Jared Steele has been nominated and selected for the Bobby Cobb Award. This is a very prestigious award. Jared is very involved in the community, is very involved here with the county. He's done a lot of great things. You are a rural land use committee. You've worked with the Union County Firefighters Burn Children fundraiser. You've done work with our forestry folks on helping us make sure that we don't have forest fires in the area. You seem to put forward that effort that we all want to see from our staff. You go above and beyond, just being here, doing your job, you go way beyond doing that. And the Bobby Cobb Award is really about recognizing those people who take public responsibility.
Jared, I apologize for that, but I think we'll just invite you up and congratulate you.
Next on our agenda is item 25-298, GFOA Distinguished Budget Award. I want to recognize Jason May, our Budget and Grants Management Director, concerning this item.
Thank you, Chair. Every year, our department applies for the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award. I believe that this is year 20, that we've received this in a row. There's a number of different credentials that we have to be able to meet. We have to meet proficient in every one of those areas, so we have to be able to go through an entire process. That's why there's an awful lot of verbiage in the budget book, that sometimes maybe it's not as much entertaining as maybe the numbers there. So we've gone through that. This year, we've been awarded that, and so we wanted to make you aware of that. And I wanted to congratulate my team on a job well done. Thank you.
For consideration of the agenda and consent agenda, are there any motions regarding requested revisions or amendments to either the consent agenda or the business agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the items listed on the consent?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as published.
All those in favor, say aye. That brings us to the business portion of the agenda. The first item on the business agenda is item 25-312, Union County Critical Intersections: Design and Cost Estimation Study Adoption. I want to recognize Bjorn Hansen, our Senior Planner, concerning this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Matthews. This is the result of a year-long study that was funded earlier last year by the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. This is the third design project that we've undertaken in the last five years. And this particular iteration was six intersections. We partnered with five municipalities throughout the county with the six intersections, two of which were in Marvin. The intersections are shown on the right. They are all in the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization study area. These were identified in our 2016 study, our 2019 study, and our 2023 study. They look at safety, operational, just growth concerns, and the process we go through is to take two viable alternatives to the public for feedback, and then take that feedback, as well as staff analysis, to identify a preferred local design. And then that's taken to the municipal and the county governing boards for concurrence. And then, once you have that locally endorsed design and cost estimate, then we can move forward to actually respond to grant opportunities through CARPO or the NC DOT to actually implement these. So, first step that we undertook last fall was data collection, collect a lot of crash data and growth projection information, as well as baseline information. Then looked at the existing conditions on the ground, developed some alternatives, went out to the public, analyzed the alternatives, and then here we are in May and June, where we're taking them to the municipal boards, which have occurred for all five municipalities, and to you, to concur with a design, so that we can complete the report by the end of June. So this is an example of the type of analysis that was done for all six of the intersections, where we collect data, 2024, applied a 2050 design year, which sounds like a long time, but it takes optimistically four to five years for any of these projects to be implemented if they were funded today. So, the intention was to have a 20-year useful life for any of these intersections. It used to be that we could throw a single-lane roundabout down at a lot of locations, and it was going to be okay, but as you and Wesley Chapel experienced last fall, for example, the one at 84 and Potter now is redesigned as frankly, an exotic intersection design, because roundabouts can be exceeded, and we're seeing that in other locations. So, in some instances, roundabouts just weren't going to work. So, it used to be that every intersection needed a roundabout, and that's not the case anymore. So, looked at designs, what would work 20 years out, crash history, and then the different benefits that could be seen based on the unique situations of each of those intersections. So we looked at different designs. They were based on traffic analysis and the topography of the ground. It's not survey-level design. They'll be refined once these intersections are actually funded for construction, but it was pretty good information to help us know what was on the ground in terms of the constraints. Public outreach, again, public outreach was key to this process. We had over 400 people respond to one or more of the surveys that were out. We conducted public outreach in the month of March. A virtual public meeting was held for each location, and we had municipal, NC DOT, consultant, and county staff attending each of the meetings to answer questions from the public. So, the next steps after the completion of this study is to respond to CARPO, NC DOT funding opportunities. CARPO has annual solicitations. We don't think we're in a place to apply for this fall, because frankly, we have committed money over the last couple cycles that's eaten up our available balance, so we need to pump the brakes and let that balance build up, so we can respond possibly in the fall of '26. And then, again, it's three to four years optimistically to get any of these built, because you have to complete the designs, right-of-way acquisition, movement of the utilities, which can be very complicated, and then actually moving into construction. So, this is an example of an intersection in Wesley Chapel. Billy Howie and I think Waxaw Indian Trail talk about the types of issues that we're seeing in terms of lots of left turns and rear-end crashes, heavy volumes, making that movement, as you can see in that intersection, moving up towards the Harris Teeter and the Target south of 84, and significant delays we're going to be continuing moving through 2050. So, looked at, at the different intersections, looked at traffic signals with realignments, which was considered at that intersection, but it was ultimately not preferred, just upgrading to a traffic signal with turn lanes, a roundabout, a splitter off-site intersection, which we're going to talk about for Indian Trail, and then converting an intersection to only right-in, right-out. So these are the types of analyses that were, and designs that were considered. This is that redesign that was considered and not selected in Wesley Chapel. You can see the costs, we gave the costs both in 2025. And then, something that CARPO now requires is we have to project it for a year of expenditure. So if it's expected to take several years to complete, you now assign an inflation factor, and that's why you're going to see some kind of startling costs. And that's because they're taking into consideration year of expenditure and increased contingencies that are required, and just the, across-the-board increase in the cost of projects. So what was ultimately selected at this specific intersection was a, just a general expansion of the intersection with turn lanes and with a signal. You can see there's a kind of a free-flow right, moving from Billy Howie onto Waxaw Indian Trail to the north. And this was a lower-cost project that was selected, so it's still $4.5 million in today's dollars, and by 2030, it'll be up to almost $5.3 million. And then the two alternatives that were taken to the public were considered, or I'm sorry, compared, in terms of the benefits, both for congestion and for safety. And then the cost estimates are broken down with the construction costs, the engineering costs, oversight costs by the DOT, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, contingencies that's applied to all phases, and then the administration charge, because the expectation is that in all instances, the NC DOT would administer these projects on our behalf. And that bottom line, learned that statistic recently, it was kind of startling, during COVID, costs increased by two-thirds. So, just four years, increased by 67%. That's unbelievable. So, the costs that we used to assign for projects in terms of our local match has increased significantly. So, again, the public engagement, how we did it. Online survey was our primary source, social media posts, Union County Horizons, Union County Communications Department was excellent in helping us get the word out, as were the municipalities. We sent postcards to each of the properties near the intersections, and the recommended designs aligned with the public feedback, which has been the case in the other rounds of this design process as well. So, this is the status of the endorsements from the municipalities. The one at the bottom is the one we're going to talk about a little bit, because Indian Trail had actually three alternatives. It's at Rogers and Wesley Chapel near the Sun Valley Cluster, which is challenging, to say the least. And the designs that would have addressed the congestion and safety issues were exotic, and were not supported by the public, but at the same time, the design that was supported doesn't really address the issues, so the town chose no alternative. And we're going to talk about that. These are the designs that, this is one of them that was considered, it's called a quadrant roadway. So, to make left turns at the intersection, you would actually, coming this way, instead of going to the intersection, making a left, you would make your left turn over here. It takes some of the turning movements away from that intersection. Problem is, it also requires a purchase of a lot of right-of-way, of a person's yard, and it's very expensive. It's over $10 million. The next one, similarly exotic, really takes that person's front yard, splits the two intersections, so they operate separately, which looks like it would be worse, but because you're separating a lot of the left turns, and you can then store those cars in the middle, it operates better overall. It's a couple million dollars less. And then the last option was just a traditional, we'll add more turn lanes, and that was $4.6 million, so it's even less money, but it only made a moderate improvement. And so the town council, just this past week, said, we're going to, we're going to wait. We don't like any of these alternatives, we're going to, we're going to see what happens. And in fact, this corridor, going all the way to US 74, which realistically needs to be multilane, was funded in CARPO's, it's identified in CARPO's Long Range Plan, after 2045, and at a cost of over $160 million. That's $80 million a mile, which is, again, just a breathtaking number. So, the public engagement, just specifically through this intersection, you can see that nearly half chose the signalized intersection, and the other two alternatives were split roughly 50-50. So if you were to combine them, really, the public input was half for just a normal-looking intersection, the other half for the more invasive intersection that would offer more benefit. So, the adoption timeline for you is, if you choose to tonight, to endorse the local position for the six designs. If you have questions, we can still bring this back in two weeks and answer any questions that you may have, but the intent is to complete the work. The consultants have released their draft plan that the staff are all providing their comments to, and we hope to get that finalized in the next couple of weeks and complete the work by the end of June. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have in the meantime.
Commissioner Helms?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Bjorn, you know, I think personally, I'm clear on the first five. If we were to approve the requested action tonight and approve the design work for these intersections, what exactly would we be approving for the Rogers and Wesley Chapel intersection there? Would that just be that we're approving no position on that?
Correct. Essentially saying it'll be decided at a future date.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Helms? Well, I am appreciative of those few municipalities that decided not to do a roundabout, because this county has been called the roundabout capital of North Carolina. The one at Indian Trail, the last one that Commissioner Helms was discussing, with that massive cut-through of an owner's property, I will not vote for that in any way, shape, or form. I know congestion's bad there, but that is not okay to me. I just needed to go on record and say that. Thank you.
Commissioner, welcome. You're good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Helms, too. You know, I understand why Indian Trail struggled with that, obviously. That would be a lot of property to try to take on or condemn, and, you know, obviously, that affects somebody's home. We don't want to do that. So, yeah, I agree that looking for other options is probably the best course of action there. You know, with that, Bjorn, thank you for the presentation. I'll make the motion that we approve the designs for the six intersections. Obviously, that Indian Trail intersection is kind of up in the air, but I'll make the motion that we make the, the motion that we approve the requested action tonight for this item.
And I just want to clarify that that motion, we would not be doing anything on the Indian Trail.
Correct. You choose no alternative.
And we would not, and that would include not doing, not approving the one that cut through someone's property.
If, if you wanted to say at this point that that was a design you didn't want to consider in the future, that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
Okay. In that case, I'll amend the motion, just for clarification, that we approve the first five intersections here. That'll be Waxaw Indian Trail, Billy Howie, NC 218 and Indian Trail Fairview, Joe Curra Marvin, Stacy Howie and Waxaw Marvin, and then Franklin and Johnson. Those intersections, that we would approve the recommended design, and then to further clarify the motion that we will take no action, or that we're going to choose no alternative on the Rogers and Wesley Chapel and Indian Trail intersection.
Okay. That works for me. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is item 25-335, interlocal and mutual aid agreement, Anson County building inspections. I want to recognize County Manager Brian Matthews concerning this item.
Thank you very much, ma'am chair. So, much like we have a interlocal agreement, mutual aid agreement with the city of Monroe, where we actually do the same thing. If the city has a request for building inspections because they are short on staff, they have an issue, or vice versa, if we have an issue, then that agreement allows us to be able to perform those inspections for the, for the city if there's ever an issue. Anson County came to us with a concern, they have staffing issues there, and they don't do very many inspections, but when they do, they don't have the level of inspectors they need to perform the work. So, they asked, would we consider a very similar agreement where if they have a need and we have the ability to accommodate that need, that we would have an agreement in place that would allow us to perform those inspections. That jurisdiction, Anson County, would be responsible for the cost of that. So, they, they pay us for that inspector, they pay us for the cost. We're essentially providing a service for them. Same thing, Monroe pays us for that cost for that service. So, when I had the discussion with the chair and the vice chair, they had some questions, and I, I felt like it might be important that our chief building code director would be here to answer any questions specifically about how this might work within the department. But this is here for the board to consider whether or not you would like to have an interlocal agreement. It would be temporary, but obviously, an agreement to provide those services for Anson County.
So, when you say they don't have many inspections per year, how many inspections did they have last year, or what estimate did they give you? Because, you know, our primary responsibility is to take care of Union County, and so, I just, I have a little bit of heartburn about our employees paid with Union County taxpayer funds going to another county to take care of their constituents. And I understand they're going to pay a fee, but did benefits and mileage and all the vehicles and oil changes and tires and, you know, is all of that factored into the fee to help another county?
Commissioners, Manager Matthews and staff, yes, ma'am. All of that was factored in, including retirement benefits. It's above my pay grade to do that calculation, but it was provided for me. Yes, ma'am. Everything's inclusive. And I'd like to add that it's not just a matter of having enough staff, they simply don't have anyone with the proper credentials to do the inspections. They can't do them. They simply can't.
Mark, can you answer how many credential inspections they would have?
Based on the number of, of large buildings that would require that extra level of certification, I'm going to say that, and I don't have a solid number, I'm sorry, we would be there no more than a half a day at any given time, and I don't believe we would be there a half a day successive in a row. I think it would be a half a day, half a day, a couple of days a week, perhaps, as these buildings come out of the ground. It's a few commercial buildings they have planned, and they simply don't have anyone with the credentials to do a commercial building.
Now, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not like a half a day all year long.
No, 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 no.
That's during the construction of this particular building.
That is correct.
So, if you had to guess, that's a total of 30 inspections. What, if you had to guess, how many inspections?
I, I would say it would be no more than three or four inspections per day, maybe a, two days a week, depending upon the rate of the buildings come out of the ground. It's just hard to foresee how many they're going, they have. Now, I will tell you that the reason we've been called in is the fact that their, their senior inspector retired last week, and he had the credentials that gave him the capability of doing these inspections. They now have a new inspector who is going through the certification process. It's going to take him somewhere between six months and 12 months to gain the certification needed to get that done. With respect to the costs, they are paying us exactly what we are spending on, on getting it done. We would also charge mileage based on, once we hit the county line, we would begin to charge mileage for that service. I would not allow staff to be there to the point that it would compromise what we do daily.
Commissioner Helms.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So, so, Mark, thanks for being here.
Yes, sir.
You know, I've had the, the unique privilege of riding around with some of your guys, and I can tell you that those guys are, well, number one, they do a great job, but also, number two, they're, they, they can get busy.
Yes, sir.
So, in your opinion, you're, you're confident that we have the resources here in Union County to provide aid to Anson and not be at our detriment? We have that, that kind of manpower where we can accommodate them?
Sir, I do believe we can, we can, we can take care of what they need. I just can't do it for a prolonged time. I can't send someone there every day of the week. I can't do that. But sporadically, yes, I, I can accommodate what they need.
And also, you know, I read over the agreement, and it does give us, it does give us some assurance there that, I think it's in part two of the agreement, says the number of hours spent by Union staff shall be at, I'm paraphrasing, shall be at the sole discretion, discretion of Union.
Yes, sir.
So, essentially, as I understand the agreement, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we, if we have a lot going on here in Union County, we may not be able to respond to Anson right away, and they might just have to wait a few days for us to get there.
Sir, you are correct. Historically, I have said no to the City Monroe. When they had a need, they wanted inspector on Monday, I may say, I'm sorry, I can't get you to Wednesday. But no, sir, we come first.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good point. I mean, you know, we want to be good neighbors.
Yes, sir.
Obviously. But we have to take care of our own backyard.
Absolutely.
Before we can render help to our neighbors.
Yes, sir.
And I think, too, and I don't, this may help sort of balance, too, some workload. So, there might be times when, when our folks might be a little slow. Maybe that's few and far between, but, but perhaps, you know, during those times, this may provide some balance to the workload.
It's important to point out that the majority of help they're going to need will come from the commercial sector. So, if we're going to have a slow day in Union County, it could very well be on the commercial side. So, yes, sir. We're not slow, but we can do this. We can make it happen because I'm not going to let them stay there too long, and we'll pull them back.
Well, I, I hope that we can change that trajectory.
I'm looking forward to it, sir.
Because we, we definitely need more commercial and, and other types of growth here in Union County, so.
Well, from what I see, my guys are staying busy.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. The terms of the agreement is just for one year or?
Initially, yes. Now, I will tell you that with the City Monroe, it, it also initially took place for a year, and we found ourselves coming back before the board to seek further improvement. So, what we did is we, we extended that to open-ended mutual agreement, but at this time, we're at one year, is my understanding.
Okay.
And they have every anticipation of having a, a person trained up by that time, and based on the new requirements for commercial buildings, that's certainly feasible to have someone up in a year.
I would like to hold it to a year until their person, you know, gets trained.
Absolutely.
And up on their feet, because I think it's going to be quite bizarre to see a Union County vehicle and a Union County inspector doing work in Anson County. And I think it could be confusing to people who see that going on, and I continue to be amazed at the phone calls we get. So, and, you know, who sees what and who reports what? So, I definitely would like to hold this to a year.
Absolutely. And if I could add an opinion, I, I think that the only other choice is to go to either another jurisdiction or to the state of North Carolina and ask the state to send one down. And to Commissioner Helms' point, I, I just think there's an obligation to, to be a good neighbor. And there may be times when we have to ask for help, so, so.
Well, SPCC is a partnership between Anson and Union. But I do want to hold this to a year and encourage Anson County, you know, to help get their person up to speed and learn from our people, you know, when they're on site, you know, what to look for and check for, and we definitely would like to, you know.
We stand ready to assist that process any way we can.
Yeah. You can feed a man.
That's correct.
Or teach them, you know, how to fish and feed themselves. So, we definitely, I don't want there to be any confusion that this board is now employing people in another county because they're having trouble hiring. So, I just want to make sure that that is not going to be a slippery slope. I need an action. Whoever's comfortable making it.
Ma'am chair, I will do my best to, to make a motion on this, and Mr. Kay, you may need to help me out here about putting the limitation of one year on this, on this agreement. But I will make the motion to approve the requested action, authorizing the county manager to, one, execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item, two, exercise any renewal or extension term options set forth in the agreement. Maybe that's what I need some help with, for a period of one year. Would that be appropriate, Mr. Kay?
Yes, for a period not to exceed one year.
Okay. So, two would be exercise any renewal or extension term options set forth in the agreement not to exceed one year in duration. And then, three, terminate the agreement if deemed in the best interest of the county, each in the county manager's discretion. Is, will that suffice, Mr. Kay? Thanks, sir.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next item of business is item 25-337, a resolution to approve system development fee analysis and methodology. I want to recognize Amy McCasco, Union County Water Business Operations Director, boy, that's a long title, concerning this item.
Good evening, once again. I'm going to skip down. So, tonight, we presented you the public comments that we received. The action we are requesting is to approve the resolution, I believe you have that in your packet, accepting the system development fee analysis, as well as the methodology for the fees, water and sewer system development fees, both based on the incremental method.
So, on this particular item, we are not asking the board at this particular time to approve the amounts, although those were shown. Amy, would you mind going back so I can at least refresh my memory on that?
Certainly.
There's a, I believe water was, it is 4,669, and that would be the incremental rate, and sewer would be 10,800. Obviously, that would need to be approved to be part of the budget for the July 16th meeting and make a decision, but at a minimum, the board, we're asking the board to approve the incremental methodology for how the fee was calculated and adopt that resolution as it, as it's been presented to you.
Ma'am chair, so, so, first of all, you know, I, I support the incremental methodology as shown here, and I think it's important for, for us to maybe, you know, inform the public here of the reason why we, why we look at this. These system development fees are a funding source, a funding source that we utilize when we start talking about water and sewer rates. So, you know, we, we use these fees for capital improvement projects that we, that we need, and it affects our, our water sewer rates that we offer to our utility customers. So, it, it's to the benefit of the system as well as, you know, the people that we serve with utility and also just the people that we serve in general in this county to keep these as high as what we can, in my opinion, within reason, of, of course, and certainly within the confines of general statute. You know, all of these methodologies that you, that we look at are based upon, well, state-approved formulas.
Correct.
I mean, so it's not something that we just willy-nilly decide to do. We don't sit here and go, you know what we should do today? We should charge $4,669 for a system development fee for water. It is based upon, you know, certain, certain criteria that the state allows us to do. And obviously, that helps fund a lot of the major improvements that we desperately need. So, you know, we talked about, a little bit about the Catawba Water Plant. The, that's, that's probably the biggest source of water, you know, for our county. And, and it's, you know, critical not only to us, but also our partners there in Lancaster. We've got, you know, many different projects going on with water tanks, with transmission lines, that again, are needed for, for public safety because, you know, we found ourselves in a situation where we're not going to have certain pressures that would be needed, you know, five, 10 years down the road. So, you know, again, you know, I, I often talk about growth. You know, what you're seeing is, in a lot of ways, a direct result from some of the growth that we've experienced. So, you know, in order to, to reinvest in our system and our utility, I think that looking at this incremental methodology is the best thing that we can possibly do. So, I'll be in support of it, and, you know, if it's pleasing to the chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion that, that we approve the resolution, accepting the system development fee analysis, as well as the methodology for the fee, water and sewer system development fee based on the incremental method.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item 25-341, charter school financial presentations. I will recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nollin concerning this item.
Looks like the, I apologize, ma'am chair, it looks like the, the presentation got screwed up a bit. Well, I am not sure what's happening with the technology tonight, so I apologize for that, but hopefully, you can see enough of the writing to where I can get through this. But... But earlier this year, the Board had some discussion about the charter schools that gets funding from Union County Public Schools. I think Brian mentioned earlier that the projection for fiscal year '26 is about 14 and a half million in the Board's interest in inviting those charter schools here to talk about how some of that funding gets used in their operation. We sent invitations to 11 schools. That represents 4,793 Union County students. And the invitation was to discuss how the money gets expended, some of their audit requirements, and fund balance policies. We offered five minutes for the institutions to present to the Board of County Commissioners. And initially, there was three that expressed interest in coming. Of that, only one is here tonight, Union Academy. We appreciate them being here to present to you all. One provided information in writing, which was provided to the Board earlier today, and one said they had a family emergency come up and they weren't able to attend tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Union Academy. Allison.
Good evening. Hi, Board. I'm Allison Simpson. I'm the head of school at Union Academy. Thank you so much for having us here and allowing us the chance to talk with you. I am joined today by Dave Feltz, who is our CFO, who will be going through the bulk of the presentation, answering the questions that were proposed to us. And I'll be available at the end if you have additional questions. Okay?
Thank you for being here tonight. It is a little disappointing to hear that 11 charter schools were invited. So we commend you, Union Academy, for being here tonight.
We appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, thanks again for having us. The one benefit is that your closing act tonight is only one CPA instead of 11. So that's probably, probably not an altogether disadvantageous outcome. I thought it appropriate to just be able to quickly summarize kind of the funding mechanisms for charter schools, including Union Academy, and also to get into the specifics of, precisely as you asked, how do we spend those public dollars? It's important to think of charter school students as public school students. They're a child that attends Union Academy is every bit as much of a Union County public school student as young Chloe, who highlighted her awards here tonight. We are funded with three major sources. The first is state funds. They come from the state, just like everyone, every other public school out there. They're the largest portion of our funding. We also have federal grants and subgrants administered through the USDOE or sub-administered through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. And then really, what we're focusing on this evening is this local pro-rata share under 115(c)(218)(105). We invoice five different counties, Union County, the Union County students, roughly 2,000 of which makes up for about 95% of our local LEA funds. So that's kind of how that breaks down. And you can see that local LEA funds represent about 24% of our total budget, along with we have state funds, about 61%, with a small portion of federal grants. And then other local funds are really athletics clubs, organizations, fundraising, those other ancillary and co-curricular revenue generating activities. Of that, 24%, about 23 of it is Union County from what you folks award to the public school students in Union County. Just like other public schools, we have three primary buckets of expenditures. We have instructional expenditures, so these are really direct instruction. So we're talking about salaries and benefits for certified teachers, instructional supplies, equipment, and then contracted instructional, a large portion of which is for our exceptional children and children with special needs and gifts. We also have support expenditures, and that's where so much falls from an administrative standpoint, but also for a contracted professional, our SROs fall there, legal, accounting, athletics, insurance, all of the not exciting things if you're an educator. Nobody, none of my educator friends ever want to talk about support expenditures. They want to know all about that direct instruction. And then lastly, we have capital outlay. Again, just like any other public school out there, this is to maintain our facilities, or if we have major, any type of major renovations or changes to those facilities, or the equipment that we have, as well as the IT infrastructure, which just seems to grow no matter where you are now. IT infrastructure continues to be a major demand on funds. We're looking at this from a proportional standpoint. You'll see that instructional expenses make up about 12.6 million or 51% of our total budget. The Union Academy, Board of Directors and also the Union Academy leadership is committed to making sure that the heft of our budget is invested in the children that we're charged with educating. And so you see about 51% goes into that, and then 43% into those support services and another small portion into capital outlay. The way our instructional expenditures break down, you would ask, how do we spend these monies? And this, these are the major categories for instructional expenditures. See, over 91% really is salaries and benefits. And again, this is for primarily our certified teachers. And then we have supplies and programs and some contracted instructional staff development as well. Our support expenditures really fall into seven major categories, the largest of which is support salaries and benefits. So we're talking about administration, coaches, maintenance, et cetera, nutrition, transportation, on and on. And then occupancy and debt service is that next big chunk there. We have a bond on our building, tax-exempt, tax-exempt low-flow-to-bond on our building. And then the rest fall from there down through clubs, athletics, administrative, et cetera. And lastly, our capital outlay, which, again, the largest part of that is furniture and equipment, but we also have facilities, capital maintenance. We do our best to try to minimize that deferred maintenance line. I'm sure that as county commissioners, you've heard that dreaded term deferred maintenance. And so Union Academy, again, does its level best to keep up with the maintenance on what are always aging facilities, it seems like, no matter how new they are. And again, you'll see the IT infrastructure comes in as a pretty strong third-place finisher there. We do have an audit every year. That was one of the questions was, do you have an audit? We do have an audit. When was the last one done? For 2024, our most recent dated audit is June 30, 2024. We have never had anything but an unqualified audit, or i.e. clean audit. So, but we undertake, we undertake one every year that's required by law. There was a question about the fund balances, what our fund balances are. The fund balance for the school, so the school actually consists of two units, one of which is called a component unit, which is the foundation. So they're kind of wrapped up or rolled up into our audit, if you will. So the fund balance for the school, per the audit, is 14.5 million. And then the fund balance for the foundation, per the audit, is about 11.88 million. The majority of the fund balance for the foundation is the building. So the foundation holds our building. The, it also holds really all of the substantial material assets of the school. Those are valued on the balance sheet at around $27 million. And we have a copy of our most recent audit that we'll leave with, we'll leave with your clerk, so that you can have it and you folks can distribute that as needed. But about $27 million in assets owned by the foundation, with about $16 million in requisite debt that goes with that. So only about $600,000 of that fund balance for the foundation is non-asset related. And that says, as much as you have to hear from the green bar guy tonight. So, and I'm happy to, certainly happy to entertain any questions you may have. Or if you have larger questions about mission of the school operations and whatnot, I'm sure that Mr. James or Ms. Simpson can answer those for you.
I do want to clarify, I mean, just out of curiosity, or, you know, because this is new to us. We've never had UA come to a meeting before. And Union County Public Schools has to present theirs annually, and more than once usually. How many students are enrolled at UA right now?
2,200.
2,200. And that's pre-K through 12?
Just K through 12.
K through 12. 2,200. Okay. And that's over five counties, but 95% being Union County students?
Yes. So those 4,700 children you saw on that prior slide, were, what, 46% of it, 44, 46% of it?
Okay. And going back to the last page, or the second, yeah, the second to the last page, that we were discussing fund balances, those are two separate fund balances, one for the school and one for the foundation.
That's correct.
Okay. And so those two together bring you to the 27 million you were discussing?
Yes, more or less. So 27 million is actually the assets in the foundation.
Okay.
And so remember, fund balance doesn't equal cash. Fund balance is really equity, think of it as equity, if you will. The 20, roughly 26 million here is 11,8 is 600 in non-asset, if you will, balances in debt. And then we maintain about, we maintain about 14, about 14 and a half in cash, because we are, we operate on a fund basis. And it's rolled up into governmental financial statements at the end of the year, full accrual.
And in your audit, is that broken out by assigned and unassigned?
So the fund balance is. So, and our, the fund balance policy is in the notes to the financial statement. So when you get a copy of that audit, you can flip to the notes and it will show you our fund balance policy in there.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
The last question that I thought of during your presentation, and really enjoy the presentation, it's very good, thank you, is going back to your salaries and benefits. Do you know offhand how many classroom teachers you have?
Um.
And an estimate's fine.
About 140, including guidance counselors. Then you start to coach, instructional coaches, and it starts to go up from there.
Okay. And roughly that number, how many are certi, do you know how many are certified licensed teachers versus how many are not certified teachers?
Yeah, to start the school year, we had 26 that were unlicensed. And now, at the end of the year, we've cut that into more than half that are either working on their licensure or have since obtained it. And it's a requirement now, moving forward, when we hire teachers, that they must have a license.
Okay. So you started out the year, 26 were not licensed, but they, so roughly half of those have begun their process. So about 13 are not licensed.
And some were just in the process already and maybe stalled.
Right.
There's a bunch of different things that could have happened. But, and some of those that are not licensed, one was a college professor, one has a degree in economics. There are other qualifications that they have that would make them a desired teacher.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner Ham's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of questions here. So first of all, again, thank you. Thank you for being here. I agree with what Commissioner Merrill said earlier. You know, obviously, we're glad to have you guys here. It's a shame that we've had, you know, so many others cancel on us. But certainly appreciate you here, because I believe that this gives some transparency, you know, to tax dollars. And I think that's very important for the public to see, you know, where their tax dollars is going. Couple of questions for you. So I noticed on the presentation that you guys had, under support expenditures, there's a line there for transportation. So can you explain what $81,000 would be going to for transportation?
Yeah, we have activity buses. And then we also provide a shuttle in the afternoon for families who sign up, where we go to like Sun Valley or Monroe Mall to drop off a cluster of students.
Okay, so it's like a drop-off point, you know, you have many different students going there.
Mm-hmm. We have some vehicles that are used for, like the golf team, for example, doesn't need a bus, they need a van. So those sorts of things.
Okay. You know, obviously, it's budget time for us, and it's budget time for UCPS as well. Can you go into maybe a little bit about your budget process and maybe, you know, what you guys, or maybe what the process would entail, you know, how that's approved? Can you give us just a little bit of information regarding that?
Sure. So we started working on the budget quite some time ago. And we, Dave is very conservative, so the budget he gives me is always very flat, or even sometimes less than flat. So we work on our budgets as a department. We come together and we send them to Dave, who takes a look at them. And then we review them with our Board. The Board will then approve the budget.
And there is a finance committee in between there, where all of the really raucous argument goes back and forth on the proposed budget.
Okay, thank you. So the Board would make final approval on the budget that you would recommend?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like similar type process to what we contend with here in the county.
That's correct.
How many Board members do you guys have currently?
13.
13 Board members. And how are these Board members selected?
We have a nominations committee.
Okay. And so then, I guess the way that it would work is, is a nomination would be made, and then that nomination would be voted upon by the other, by the main body. Is that correct?
The committee goes through the nominations. They have interviews and review resumes and propose forward candidates that they think would be of value to the school board.
Okay. One last question, and this goes back to the difference between the foundation versus the school. Is there, is there like a budgeting process for the foundation? Is that similar? Or is that strictly for fundraising purposes?
It's strictly for fundraising. Their budgeting process is separate, separate from ours as a school.
Okay. If you don't mind me asking, who oversees, does the Board oversee the foundation as well, or is that a separate Board?
It's a separate Board, and they're also audited in the same, the same way that we are.
All right. Thank you. And thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
Great.
I would now like to recognize our county manager for comments.
I have no comments. Thank you very much.
Okay. I do want to say we did miss Commissioner Sodz tonight, and we look forward to him being with us very soon. I will start with Commissioner Bronham for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments from me tonight. So first of all, I think many members of the community was, well, probably found out about the Monroe City officer that was injured in the line of duty the other night. Thoughts and prayers go out to that officer, wishing that officer a full and speedy recovery. Obviously, we talked about a lot of things tonight. We've heard from, you know, our great folks there at UCPS. We've heard about system development fees, and we've heard about budgets. Yes, thank you to Union Academy for being here. Just a quick note on the budget. I don't know if anybody's ever, you know, looked at the county budget before. If you haven't, I would encourage you to do so, because it's about 400 pages of light reading. And there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of effort that goes into this. Obviously, you know, our staff puts in a lot of effort. You know, we put in a lot of effort in looking at these line items. And there's a lot of questions that have been tossed around and posed our staff. And so, you know, what the public sees when we talk about this is not at the granular level. And I understand that most probably realize that. But there is a lot of effort that goes into putting these things together. And from what I've seen, the budget that we are considering, and the budget that our manager has proposed, is extremely tight. It is. And, you know, I commend our staff, you know, for putting that together. And I want to assure the residents of Union County that every effort has been made, you know, to make sure that we are, that we are bringing that tax rate and that tax, that property tax, as close to what you were currently paying as what we possibly can. So we do have some challenges. You know, we have to pay for that school bond. When the voters approve something, we have to do that. But I think that what we're seeing is a better result than what we had anticipated at first. And again, hats off to staff for putting us something together that takes the best interest of the property owners in mind. Thank you.
Commissioner Christina Ham's.
Of course, we want to
Of course, we want to recognize the Monroe Police Department and Union County Sheriff's Office for the recent development of an officer, a peace officer, being injured. It has hit close to home for us simply because I have family members who have thankfully retired safely from being a peace officer on the state and local level. One of them was shot, but thankfully it was not life-threatening in very minimal time for recovery. But they have a very dangerous job, and I hope that this board has expressed time and time again, I hope it's clear to them how much we support what they do for all of us here in the county and how much we appreciate all of them. I'd also like to thank staff for working so diligently on our budget. It was great weekend reading. I have many, many tabs and still many to go on mine, and lots of questions. Why is this one line item? And I can call staff and say, why is this line item on page such and such so high? Well, and it's amazing, they know the answer without having to research it. So I do appreciate what staff has done during all this. This is a very stressful time for not only board members, but for the community at large, just worrying about their taxes, especially right now when we're still coming out of the last four years. So hopefully, this meeting and the next meeting will put a lot of people's mind at rest because I was asked multiple times, I understand our home values, our tax rate's going to go up 68%. No, it's, no, no, it's not. So please take the time to go back, and if someone has a question, please reach out to somebody, ask the question so that you clearly understand. Staff has done a fabulous job trying to minimize the impact that we're faced with. And as Mr. Helms has mentioned multiple times, some of the increase is from voter-approved bonds. And because a voter said, yes, we want improvements in schools and whatever else it is, then we follow the law and approve that and make adjustments accordingly. So I definitely want to make sure that staff knows how much they are appreciated during all of this and all of their hard work and many, many long hours that they have had to go through each department. And there were a lot of departments that actually took cuts. So we appreciate all that they have done. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to express my support for local law enforcement, for the job they do and for the real estate take on our behalf, and ask continued prayers for them. And I'd also like to congratulate little Chloe on being a winner. When she hopped out of that seat, I think it lifted the hearts and spirits of everyone in the room and put a smile on every face. And I notice y'all aren't always smiling when we up here. She really lifted the room. So that concludes my comment.
I'll just end with thank you, staff. I know that you've been burning the midnight oil, I think, since January or February just to get to this first presentation tonight. So we look forward to going through this with you and hopefully coming to a conclusion at our next June meeting. I do want to wish our Monroe Police Officer a speedy recovery. I know that was an extremely scary situation. I cannot imagine being shot at. I cannot imagine someone fleeing into the woods and shooting from the woods at police officers. But it just, again, solidifies how proud we are of our law enforcement. And I just want to commend the Monroe Police Department for trusting their instincts when they saw this vehicle. We just regret that they were fired upon. So we wish her a very speedy recovery. I am going to join the Chloe bandwagon, and I am going to say, Chloe, thank you so much for being here tonight and her sweet parents. Her medals just jingled as she came up here. What a, just bright young lady, and she looks very decisive. And I want to thank Mrs. Cotter with Special Olympics. It is my understanding that she volunteers all of her time to help run Special Olympics in Union County.
Yes, ma'am, that is true. And she was also, and she's too proud to say it, she was nominated and approved. She is the local coordinator of the state this year. She won that accolade that was announced at spring games this year, that she was the recipient of that award from North Carolina.
Thank you so much. Well, please let her know that we mentioned her and we're so thankful that she was here tonight. It was lovely to see her face to face instead of email. Thank you, Reverend Jimmy Benchin, Chairman of Union County Public Schools Board of Education. Thank you for being here tonight. In your presentation, almost $15 million does come right off the top. Most people do not realize that when Union County comes year after year after year, that when they come to us advocating for local tax dollars, they are advocating for charter schools. And their budget request this year is almost $15 million for the charter school students. So again, I want to thank UA for being here. Enjoyed your humor. It was great to hear from you tonight because we really don't hear from the charter schools very often. And you're a known entity in the county, so it's an honor to have you here tonight and have you present to us. And with that, I will just say this coming week is going to be very exciting in Union County with all of our seniors graduating. And we wish, you know, great celebrations, safe celebrations with all of our Union County seniors. We wish them the very, very best, whether they're choosing to go into the workforce, if they're choosing to serve our country in the military, or if they're choosing to further their education. We just wish them great, great success going forward. But just please be safe, and we wish all of those children a safe summer, a fun summer. And with that, I will just thank you for being here, and we will motion to adjourn. Okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.